We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council. The order, would everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malloy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Homan.
Here.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here, thank you very much. We're going to actually start out with a couple of proclamations and then appointments and recognitions. The first proclamation is for Stepping Stones Campaign, and if I could have Kara and Emily, please come forward. Sorry, I need my glasses to read this, even though it's big type. Thank you. Proclamation, Stepping Stones Campaign, April 2017. Whereas Stepping Stones, the YWCA Sexual Assault Services Program, provides free and confidential support to sexual assault survivors and their loved ones, those who seek Stepping Stones services receive the information they need in order to make their own educated decisions about what to do next, and whereas those who seek Stepping Stones receive the information they need in order to make their own educated decisions about what to do next, and whereas fully trained advocates are on call 24 hours a day and by contacting the PATH Crisis Line at 309-827-4005, of which will provide support to survivors and their family and friends regardless of whether the assault occurred recently or years ago. And whereas Stepping Stones can provide aid over the phone or in person at local hospitals and police stations, and whereas Stepping Stones services include the following: free and confidential counseling to adult and adolescent survivors of sexual assault as well as family and friends, support groups for survivors, education programs for community groups and students, assistance for sexual assault survivor in requesting civil no-contact orders from the court, orders that the perpetuated to stay away, medical, legal, and other advocacy for survivors, and 40-hour training for anyone interested in becoming a trained volunteer. Whereas sexual assault does not discriminate based on age, gender, race, socioeconomic levels, or marital status, and neither will Stepping Stones. Whereas in the month of April 2017, Stepping Stones will mark the month with a campaign of community events that highlight the seriousness of sexual assault as well as the need to support victims of sexual assault. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, ask the community to show their support by wearing a teal ribbon on their lapel for the month of April and come out to support the efforts of Stepping Stones in their long-month campaign. Thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you. Next proclamation is Blue Bow Campaign Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there anyone here to accept the ... oh, please come forward. Good evening, thank you so much. Right, and your name is?
Andy Williams.
Andy Williams, okay. Andy Williams is here to accept this. Proclamation declaring April 2017 Blue Bow Campaign Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem and funding solutions depend upon involvement among people throughout the community, including the courts, and whereas statistics of children who were abused and neglected escalate each year according to the latest data from the fiscal 2015 McLean County, and they had 1,632 reported cases, and whereas the effects of child abuse are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among the courts, social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement, and business, the business community. Whereas parents plus share a prevention program of children's home plus aid, offering positive alternatives to help break the cycle of abuse, is sponsoring a Blue Bow Campaign to heighten awareness of the need to support families, and whereas all citizens should become more aware of child abuse and its prevention within the community and to become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Blue Bow Campaign Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon citizens to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you. And we move on to appointments and recognitions. If you are in the audience, would you please stand, and actually if you'd all remain standing, whoever's in the audience, and we'll give you a round of applause perhaps together because there's a long list. This is the time of the year where appointments expire or there are vacancies that occur. Many of the vacancies are May 1st through April 30th. And so first we have Patricia Martin and Robin Van Der Neijt to the Citizens' Mutification Committee. I know at least, yeah, see both of you are there, okay. Barbara Meek to the Boarding's Order of Appeals. Barbara. Larry Stevig to the Building Board of Appeals. Larry. Angelique Rackey to the Cultural District Commission. John Erlich to the Historic Preservation. I butchered his name, sorry. Okay. Rhonda Smith. Rhonda Smith, I know is in the audience. Kiran Konan, Kiran, are you there? To the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Alicia Whitworth to the Library Board of Trustees. Alicia. Kevin Seis to the Planning Commission. Rodney Smithson to the Property Maintenance Review Board. Kyle Silver to the Bloomington Normal Sister City Committee, Japan. Diane Hollister, I know is in the audience, I saw her, to the Library Board of Trustees. And that's it. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay. At this point, we move to public comment, and people have up to three minutes. I'm going to read them in groups of three so we can handle this as expeditiously as possible. Celia Twoheart, followed by Scott Steimerling, and then Glenn Ludwig. Okay, so Cecilia, Scott, and Glenn.
I don't need to do it. Okay, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm Cecilia Twoheart, and I do look different, so I wanted to be sure and show my face now to people in Bloomington since I have lived in Bloomington and McLean County for a better of 15 years now. I'm here tonight for the first time I can show my invention. I've waited, and I've had to wait unless everybody wanted to sign a nondisclosure agreement for my intellectual property rights that you'd have to sign the nondisclosure agreement that's three pages long in order to see my invention in the last six years. I started my company in 2001. I'm a designer of children's clothing, and I do indeed own the entire endeavor, which includes six now, six U.S. design patents, a U.S. trademark, a corporation formed surrounding the intellectual property rights, the intellectual property, which is the invention itself, and the dot com. I own all those things together as a United States corporation, and I look forward to launching that company. I wanted to show my invention tonight because it's something that has not been unveiled publicly at all, but that I have publicly in prior years shown it to people that did show, that did sign my nondisclosure agreement, and through no fault of my own that somebody might have seen it without my having assigned nondisclosure agreement, so I would hope that my intellectual property is in fact secure and safe. So here it is. I have, because of the six U.S. design patents, about 150 permutations of children clothing designs through the United States Patent Office, and so I've actually started my own niche in the U.S. economy and the market, and I've pretty much guaranteed that I will have sales, but we'll see what people think. And what I did was I just put a hole in the back of the garments for infants that we would have access to their back to be able to touch them or massage them, certainly after they're born, to help them through the after-birth trauma that they all experience, but that, you know, the doctors and the nurses would also have access to the child's back and provide a warm touch for welcoming them into the earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Steimerling, and then Glenn Ludwig, and Bruce Meeks.
Okay, on March 25th, on March 25th, about 3 o'clock, I was traveling down North Hershey. It was about 1,400 block, and there was cars parked on both sides of the street. A child could be concealed very easily between those cars, dart out in traffic, and there's no way you can stop. There's a kid going to have to be killed before it's done. Why was the parking not, why did they not allow parking on North Hershey when they opened it up to Corporate South? And, you know, North Hershey, Hershey was not that busy when that was built. The way it is today, you know, it's the next Veterans Parkway. Do we allow parking on Veterans Parkway? No. They've made accommodations where people can get the cars off the street five days a week. Why can't they do it Saturday and Sunday? It's not up to the city to provide them parking, it's up to them to put on the extension. As far as the, I guess as far as, you know, people parking on Hershey, that prevents the people from seeing between those cars, and I hope the city is not waiting for someone to get killed.
Thank you. Glenn Ludwig, Bruce Meeks, and Patricia Martin.
Good evening and thank you. I try to make this pretty short. I have got, the reason I want to talk tonight is, is that I discovered something in the meeting packet that I thought might, because of the length, thick packet for tonight, the length of the packet might go overlooked, and it's actually, what I've thought is if I maybe didn't speak up about it, that the consent agenda would blow right through it and nobody would really be aware of it. I have to, I'm not here to criticize anybody, I'm here to congratulate Cherry over here because she's going, and her staff are going through an awful lot of work to correct the problem. The consent agenda, item number 7C, deals with unapproved and missing work session minutes. And the packet tonight has the minutes for 22 work session meetings over 11-year period from 1998 through 2009, and I understand there's about 30 more set of minutes that have never been produced. I'm not here to point fingers or blame anybody, but I hope that whoever was responsible is not, although I think they may be, enjoying a spiked pension as a result of the fact that they didn't do their work. The reason I got interested in it is that I've been searching for information related to how the council came to the conclusion that they did with the Metro Zone, and so I thought, well, maybe there was some discussion about that back then, because this doesn't take it up, what I've got only takes it up to 2009. I didn't read all these minutes. I scanned them, didn't find anything yet, but there's more coming. So, and this occurred under Mayor Stockton and Mayor Markowitz and City Manager Hamilton and Hales, and it'll be interesting to see how you vote tonight because there's only three of you here tonight that I think were at the meetings that you're approving minutes for, so I don't know how you approve minutes for, whether you know they're right or wrong because you weren't there. But anyway, I just want to make people aware of that and make people aware of the fact that I'm looking for some information that I may never find, I hope I find, that will help me better understand, and maybe a lot of other citizens understand, why we ended up with this decision that has stressed collaboration within our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, for those of you who are standing, there still are some seats up in various places. We have Bruce Meeks, Patricia Martin, and then Donna Boland.
Good evening, City Council. Hope you have a great April coming up. These are your meetings and your responsibility. Item 7C was just discussed, and that's my main focus this evening. This is still happening, has been happening since 2013. There are still minutes missing. I want to totally echo what Glenn said. This is not and should not throw any staff member, past or present, under the bus with the exception of the mayors and the city managers. The mayors are the chair of the meeting. There is no mechanism in place for you all to know whether the meeting minutes from two months ago came back or not. The tracking of minutes, believe me, is a nightmare to try to follow something. I understand technology is looking at that, I think Cheryl's looking at that, trying to resolve that. We can't even search our own city code on the website, which we could do before the July 4th, 2012 change. I had to do a FOIA request for the Night of the Century, the special meeting. I do not believe you've approved that yet. Was that what, about two years ago? Why is that not done? The problem with the content from 1998 to now is the content. If you actually look at some of those situations, you will see the content's rather controversial. There was a work session in downtown Bloomington, Mr. Hales presented a draft, Todd Greenberg was there, the facilitator was there, the members of the council that were there, they were told, "You need to start filing the OMA." This is 2011, I do believe, long before I started getting upset about the transparency and filing the OMA. I think we need to put a mechanism in place. This is also a problem for the commissions, the boards. We have, we have, I've sent you spreadsheets showing you, I filed with the Illinois Attorney General about missing minutes. Unfortunately, the system's a little fixed, we have to do it within a certain timeframe, and you hold them in a drawer somewhere for two years. I am going to allege that a lot of those reasons those weren't done until you actually do an inquiry and tell me differently, that the city managers made the choice prior to this city clerk to hold those minutes in place. I'd be more than willing to be proved wrong, and that's not a conspiracy theory, that's based on the facts that I've seen content after content after content. And no, you shouldn't vote for these if you weren't here. Robert's Rules allows you to vote for him. Mr. Jurgens should be called up and share that with you. Thank you. Have a great rest of the month.
Patricia Martin. And Donna Boland.
This is rather short. I continue to support our county mental health first aid program sponsored by the Health Department. The current schedules are being posted now. On the 8th of April, there will be a free session of the McLean County Health Department at 220 West Front Street from 8 to 5, materials and lunch furnished as well, and other sessions, however, are reasonably priced at only $10. The course is of general interest, though, for example, there are others specifically intended for public safety on the 21st at the McLean County Center for Human Services and Youth ages 12 to 18 at the Boys and Girls Clubs on the 30th of May. This is an excellent way to help yourselves and your community identify and deal with situations and institutions, public and private, that could lead to potential difficulties for both staff and patrons. It is also a beneficial way of developing connections with others who have similar concerns, and I speak from experience as I took the general course last year at Advocate Bromine. I have distributed copies of flyers in the Bloomington Public Library and at various sites throughout our area as well. And once more, I want to thank Mayor Renner and the rest of you for your support for those of my generation through last year's, last June's proclamation against elder abuse. It was a memorable month for me and others too, as was this March with its similar resolutions, 25 and 32, in the House of Representatives in Springfield. Now the next big step is for all of us to make them work. Okay, thank you. And these are copies of the flyers, which will be around the community.
Great. Thank you, Patricia.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Great. Donna Boland.
I'm Donna Boland, and I live in Moore, too. I couldn't make it to the work session, so I want to talk about Fox Creek Road. I live out there, near the Danbury Court, so the street in question, I don't live on, on Fox Creek Road, but I walk down to the school and back. And I just wanted to kind of give an overview of my perspective. Only the residents in the golf, people that play golf actually go down there, it's not the fair like Hershey is. And the road does curve and it has, and it muddles, so sometimes visibility is difficult. And of course, if it's slippery and you're going on curves, it's not going to be safe. However, the lots are about a quarter acre, so children have plenty of room to play in the backyard, there shouldn't be an issue with children running into the street. And the homes have three car garages, so parking should not be an issue. Now, I look at like the whole overall, if I'm going to be out there five, 10 years, 45 miles an hour is fast through there. It's fast between Oakland and Veterans because of the curves. So I do think 35 would be a good starting point. If you feel 30 is better, that's fine with me, I don't, I don't care about that. The road to the east, though, is also 45 miles an hour, and I know you're going to be widening the bridge and putting in pedestrian and bicycle paths on either side, so that might help the problem, but I think when I drive, 40 miles an hour works best for safety. So the city may want to consider doing the whole stretch, or evaluating the whole stretch, moving 40 miles an hour from Oakland to Veterans, 30 or 35, back to the school, and for the transition, I would recommend putting a stop sign at Oakland. And the reason is when I walk there, it's kind of scary, because cars don't want to stop, they want to do like a California stop, and you can't see them coming, so, thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Okay. We're going to move right along to our consent agenda, and I just want to remind everybody that if you want to have immediate answers, or if we can get them to you, or problems solved, I have a mayor's open house from 4:30 to 5:30. We sit right over there along the table, and we can't always solve problems in real time, but sometimes we can, or you can get answers. The public comment, it is our policy of not to respond, so if you want immediate responses, please join us. At this point, we're moving on to consent agenda. Are there items that anyone in the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
I'm recusing myself from 7D and 7K for conflict of interest.
7D and 7K, recusal, and I think we can, we're at the point where we can just note that, is that right, Cherry? So you don't have to leave the room. Okay, Scott Black.
I will be also recusing myself from 7K.
7K, recusal. Alderman Black. And Alderwoman Howman.
I don't know whether I need to just recuse myself or pull item 7C, because I would prefer not to vote on that, since I'm...
Well, let's, yeah, actually, that's a great idea, because, yes. How about you pull it, and you probably are not the only one.
I'd like to pull item 7C from the consent agenda.
There's quite a bit of clarification that can be provided on that, okay. Alderman Fruen.
I would like to pull a 7I. 7I.
7A.
7A, okay. Anything else? All right. At this point, can I have a motion to approve with the exceptions of 7C, 7I, 7A, and then we have 7D and 7K recusals?
So moved.
So moved by Alderwoman Howman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Okay. You can go ahead and vote, please. The motion carries, there are nine I's, there are no N's to announce, Madam Clerk, and so we're going to, in order of these being pulled, we will go to 7C with Alderwoman Howman, and if you can address some of your concerns, and I have some answers, and then Jeff Jurgens has some answers to some of the questions I think that have been raised about these long-time minutes.
Yes, I did read Jeff's, Jeff Jurgens' email to the council earlier, but I'm still uncomfortable voting to approve the work session meeting minutes, since I wasn't there, so.
Okay. Just generally, Jeff, if you wanted to, there had been a backlog of minutes from back, as you can see here, 2009, 2007, 2006, 2005, 2004, 2003, and obviously, this is not good practice. We don't do this anymore, but the, these were situations where we do have, did we have audio when these were developed? Do you know?
I do not believe there's audio. There are the handwritten notes of the previous city clerk that accompanies these minutes, so the staff does have those minutes, so to speak, in shorthand or the handwritten notes. This clerk's office is trying to type those up and more formalize them. We did not have any record that they were actually approved, not to say, you know, 100% that they weren't, but we thought the best practice was to bring them back forward, typed up in a more formal format for approval by the council.
Sure. And then, of course, the record would show that obviously most of the council, and myself as mayor, I was not mayor, most of council members were not on the council at the time of many of these meetings.
That's right, and as Mr. Meeks stated, you still have the ability to vote on these, even though you were not present, it's not all that uncommon to have to vote on meeting minutes that you weren't present at. Certainly understand if you're not comfortable to do that, but there's nothing that prohibits you from being able to vote on these minutes. Certainly if you have something that you think is incorrect in the minutes, you're, you know, can speak up to that and they can be changed, but there is no prohibition on your ability to vote on them.
Let me ask, worst-case scenario, what if we all say, "No, we're not going to vote on any of these minutes"? Do they just sit out there in limbo?
They would sit out there in limbo, and we'd have to come back to a Plan B that we don't have drawn up yet.
Okay. But there's nothing in statute or ordinance or Robert's Rules of Order that prevent us from approving these if we think that they're at least a reasonable estimate as best we can make, up to over a decade after the fact.
No, the law requires that these minutes be timely approved. Certainly we found a situation, as Clerk Lawson said, as part of the reorganization of this office, and some other factors that these came to light, and so as soon as we became aware of them, the clerk's office began an effort to get these in line with all the other work that that office has, and so has been making a good effort to do that. They had a setback with somebody being ill in that office, so, but now they're back to kind of full speed and really trying to get these completed and, and part of the public record. The only other thing I would say, we don't have the audio recordings, but my understanding is we do have the actual written minutes that will also be kept and maintained, so if anybody ever desires to see those, those are... if anybody ever desires to see those, those are also part, will be part of the record.
But it's the written notes that the clerk at that time would take, that were transferred to the materials that we have in front of us?
That is correct.
Okay. Alderman Longway.
Yeah, earlier, I spoke with Jeff on the phone, and I also felt a little bit uncomfortable in not having been there to approve something that I just wasn't a part of. And from what you're telling us, it sounds like, or at least I remember you saying that, you know, you're actually not sure if they had been approved or not. So, could we check with?
Well, I would say we're not 100% sure that they haven't been approved, but I think our pretty, our best estimate is that they were not ever formally approved. We were never able to find evidence of that.
And were we able to check with previous employees, maybe, who are no longer part of?
I'll have to check.
The previous employees in our office also concur that they had not been brought forward, to the best of their knowledge. And so, what we're doing is working off the minutes that were hand-prepared by the former clerk.
Okay. And did we ask the former clerk? No? Okay.
Alderman Fruin.
Cherry, for my benefit, you're still transcribing these, or you're still taking them from your handwritten notes? Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And so, maybe a question for the council is, why haven't we gone to the, using technology and voice recognition and have this done automatically? I mean, we've talked about it before, but it never gets any traction. So, why isn't that done through technology?
It actually has been done. At each council meeting, such as this one, and our special council meetings, this meeting is recorded by way of video as well as audio. And so, we're able to go back after the meeting, and either review it on audio, or the video streaming, and transcribe those minutes. The other thing too, is as of February, I believe, we started having an outside vendor transcribe the minutes. And so, our office don't really spend that much time on transcribing. The only thing that is transcribed in the office are the special council meeting minutes. And also, if you notice that during those special meetings, there is a recorder that records the meeting. And what I do is, I draft or write some cursory notes so that I can go back to. But we do use current technology in everything that we do at this time.
Alderman Black.
Perhaps I'm the minority here, but it does not bother me to vote on these minutes. It just seems like it's housekeeping, even though I was nine years old at one of the meetings. I had to throw that in there.
If I could just expand on that, not how old you were at the time, but you can also think about this, as you're getting ready to have an election, eventually, you know, there could be some turnover in this council. At one meeting, you all will still be meeting as a group, but it's very possible there could be different elected officials sitting in your chair. They will be called upon to act upon minutes that were part of that previous, that last board meeting in April. So, to some extent, this is natural. Now, this, there's nothing really natural about this, but it's not always uncommon for you to have to go back and vote on meeting minutes that you weren't a part of. It's certainly not the ideal situation-
It's not when you were nine.
Yes, yes. And not when you were nine.
Not when I was nine. All right. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Again, an I vote-
Can I, I wanted to-
Oh, okay.
So, is the record going to state that we were, I mean, some of the people who approved it were not present, and da-da-da-da-da?
Oh, of course.
The clerk can state whatever you want it to state, too. If you want to go on the record and-
I think that's been clearly part of the debate, there's part of the audio, there's part of the video. And if you want to abstain, there is an option too, for you to abstain.
Okay.
All right. Okay. There are eight I's, there are no nays to announce, but one abstention.
Alderman Howman.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
Technicality, Diana's vote count in the affirmative?
Well, at this point, that's moot, because it passes by eight, so I don't-
It is, but I think for future reference, the council ought to be aware of, sometimes your abstain can count with the affirmative.
With the affirmative, right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for clarification. Okay. We're going to move right along to the, let's see, item 7I, and I believe Alderman Fruin, you pulled that.
Thank you. With hesitation, I would make a motion that it be approved as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. And then, you had some concerns?
My only concern is encouragement to my colleagues to maybe take a look at this going forward, and the reason we're approving this tonight without a bid process is an action we took back in March of 16, when we established certain firms for certain services, and we approved a three-year contract period. So, this isn't about the fire department station, it's not about BLDD, it's about our policies and procedures. And the point here is, we're spending $310,000 for architectural-related services for redesign of Fire Station 3. And I think to the public, maybe to ourselves, we think that $300,000 is quite a bit of money for architectural redesign of an existing building. I'm not an architect, I'm not that professional, but at some point, there ought to be some dollar limit, in my opinion, that some of these are put out for bid. Anyway, that's my encouragement going forward, that we take a look at our guidelines, our procedures, and decide if we're going to award this large of a contract without a bid process. So, I made the motion for approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. At this point, obviously, an I vote is in favor of the item 7I. Motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move on to item 7A. Alderman Longway?
Yes, I, as I read these minutes for the budget work session, it seems like there, something that was attributed to me is not what I said, and something that wasn't attributed to me is what I said. So-
Fortunately, we got audio on that too, don't we?
Right, right. So, on page six, midway through the page, where we, there's a discussion about economic development, and conversational Mr. Hales, I believe I'm the one who said that, and not Alderman Fruin. Anybody follow me?
Mm-hmm.
Come on Scott, get with it. You see that? Yeah, okay. And then, at the bottom, the discussion about existing fees and permit costs, I don't believe I said that. My, I don't remember saying that, so, I don't know. I'd like to check the audio. Yeah.
It's possible the names are switched.
Yeah.
At this point, can we, since we're not 100% sure, I wonder if we can just postpone this?
Sure.
And then, vote on this, our next exciting episode? Okay?
That would be acceptable.
Is there a motion to postpone voting on this to the next meeting?
I will make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Longway, is there a second?
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second by Alderman Lauer? We have discretion now. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you postponing to the entire?
No, no, just-
Just the budget work session.
Everything else has been already approved, only item 7A. I'm sorry. Alderman Painter, did you want to?
No. I just want you to look at Cherry.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, so are we, okay. So, we have to approve this motion first, right? So, this motion would approve the budget workshop, excuse me.
No, would postpone the budget work session.
Postpone, I meant postpone, postpone the minutes of the budget workshop meeting until the next scheduled council meeting.
That's right.
So, time's certain. Okay. And we have a first and a second. Okay, everyone would vote on postponing approving the budget work session minutes? I'm sorry?
Can you get this to take care of tonight?
Um, well-
We're just asking for a slight clarification in the budget discussion.
I know, it's just, not necessarily in the middle of the meeting, Cherry's taking notes, so, that's why I thought it would be best. Okay. Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you. And then, we now move to consideration of approval of the March 13 regular city council minutes. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Howman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any discussion on this? All right? So, obviously, I vote is in favor of those minutes. Okay. So, the motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. All right. Now, we move to our regular agenda.
No, no. 7D and 7K.
Oh, we had D? Oh, I thought we were handling those in terms of you just announcing your recusal.
No.
Oh, we are going to, okay. So, item 7D?
But we stay in the room.
Yeah, okay. So, all right, is there a motion to approve item 7D?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter, second by Alderwoman Howman. Any discussion on 7D? Seeing none? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, am I abstaining?
You can press abstain if you'd like. We know that you're not-
Thinking about what you-
No, you're just not voting.
You're just not voting? Okay. Because of the point that Alderman Fruin made a little while ago, it's probably a good idea not to abstain. So, item 7D passes eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. So, we move on to item 7K, and as I recall, we had two recusals. And are there, is there a motion to approve item 7K?
No.
Alderman, moved by Alderwoman Painter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? Go ahead and vote on item 7K. Okay. The motion passes seven to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, we move on to our regular agenda. Item Public Aid A is our public hearing, public hearing for the program year, fiscal year 2018, CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, and consideration of authorizing submission of this action plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have a very brief presentation and brief council, we don't have a budget for council discussion, but assuming we will have time for questions, if we have some, so-
You will.
Hit it Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me again. It seems like we were just here doing this, because we were a couple months ago, so, this will be short and sweet. I really am just going to talk a little bit about some changes that have happened since we talked, I think, in February, and you approved tentatively the budget that we had planned. So, we'll go over that. But, part of our action plan process, we're required to do public notifications, so I always like to do this at the public hearing and let people know exactly how we've published. The action plan became available to the public on February 24th. We're required to have it available for at least 30 days prior to the public hearing, so we're good on that. Copies are available in our office at Community Development, at the public library, and then in the clerk's office, and then we always post it on the website. In addition to that, we publish in the pantograph that it's available, we mail letters, we send emails, I discuss it at meetings. So, everybody pretty much has an opportunity to go look at it if they want to, and during that time, we can accept comments. We have had no comments to this point, so I'm thinking everybody's just really great with what we have planned. Couple things that have changed since we spoke last, and that is that we did receive notification that we received two grants that we applied for last fall. Both of them are from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. One is for their single-family rehabilitation program, and here, and as soon as the funding agreements are out, you'll be seeing me again, I'm sure, as I come and ask permission for us to submit those agreements. But for that program, we received about $236,000 for the abandoned property program, which helps with demolitions, mowing of abandoned properties, board ups, when we have properties that need to be boarded up, so that the city doesn't have to incur that expense. We have that grant that we can help cover some of those expenses with. Because we got those two grants, we were able to shift a little bit of funding around in our CDBG budget. And if you'll remember, I kind of divided things out into tier one, tier two. We were able to go ahead and fund those tier two projects, because we could reduce a couple of the other items, since we have this funding. So, here's what we expect for revenues for the program. The CDB allocation, I have to say, normally, we know what we're getting for next year, and we do not know yet, still at this point, from HUD. I have been assured that we are getting money, they're just still trying to wait for the approval out in Washington DC, before they can let us know exactly how much. So, it may delay the start of our program year just a little bit, so I'm really glad we have that item money coming in, so we can still do some projects. We're also expecting probably more carry-forward funding than we thought we would have initially, because we had some projects we weren't able to get finished. So, $721,554 is what we asked for revenue, or we requested in the budget would be put in for revenues. So, this is what the expenditures are going to look like. The homeowner rehabilitation program, that's reduced a little bit from what you originally approved, so that we took some money from there to shift it to some other projects. We added in the security cameras at Woodhill Tower, they were a tier two project. Rehab service delivery stayed the same, or actually, our demolition program stayed the same, because we did get the abandoned property program. Public services right now have not changed. If our allocation is greatly reduced for this year, we're only allowed to spend 15% of our allocation, and this year's program income on public services, we are almost right at that 15%. So, if our allocation gets reduced, we may have to make a few cuts there, when we find out what that is. Woodbury Park stayed the same. We added in HVAC system for Heartland Head Start at $15,000. We increased, or actually, no, I'm sorry, we added, I think we had taken the sewer project out, thinking it was going to get done this year, and then it didn't, so we put it back in, and we increased the funding a little bit, because we had the additional dollars. And then, the other two items for the WBRP facade program and tool library have not changed, neither has our administration request. That's it.
Questions? Now, we move into the, because this is a public hearing, we would start out with the questions and comments from the council, and then the public, if you have comments and questions on this, you can line up behind Jennifer, and you get up to three minutes to comment on this particular program and presentation. So, we'll start with the council. Council questions. Alderman Page.
Thank you. Thank you Jennifer. Just maybe a quick request, and you tell me when would be appropriate from a timing standpoint. So, maybe a little bit more than a third of the budget is on housing rehabilitation.
Yes.
And a lot of that is unspecified?
No, that is specifically for our homeowner loan and for our rehabilitation program.
Yeah, so what I was going to ask was, at some point after those specific homeowner loans, the ultimate destination for the $274,000, could you come back and just share with us, or just give us an update on specific addresses and that type of thing?
Oh, yeah, I can share that, yes.
That those, that grant is servicing?
Yeah, if you want to look, too, as part of the action plan, we usually, or actually, I'm sorry, it's our caper, which we do in July, and I can let the council know when that's out there, but we always do maps. Instead of sharing actual addresses, we prefer to just have dots on a map, but we can show you where all the projects were. And so, last year's is actually on our website right now, so.
So, no need to come back? If you can just give us a heads up that that's out there? Maybe a link to where that is?
Okay, certainly, yes.
Thank you Jennifer.
Thank you. Alderman Fruin.
I was going to ask the question of, have we ever considered housing rehabilitation assistance outside of the CDBGA program?
Well, I believe the city used to have some money that they set aside for housing rehabilitation programs. Is that what you're asking, as far as funding sources? Or are you looking at?
No, I guess I'm just a big fan for whatever revenue source that would come from, the more we can, you know, just like, what's a similarity to it? The 50-50 sidewalk program.
Okay.
Wherever that money comes from, to the extent that we can help people with some kind of a 50-50 program with their housing rehab, and we've got a lot of housing stock that people could use some help, you know, so we've got grant options, we have different options, but if we can ever expand on that, if there's everything, anything I would ever increase our spending on, it would be helping people in those situations to improve their houses.
Okay. Real quick, just something that we are exploring right now is a CDBG tool that's called the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. We're working with LISC on that, and we would, it's totally data-driven, so we would look at all the data in the community and see where the most of the needs are. We can establish an area, and within that area, right now with CDBG, you have to meet the HUD income guidelines. Within that NRSA, 51% of the people that you assist have to be within that income guidelines, but you can assist people outside of that, as long as 51% of the homes you assist. So that's one way that we would start, looking at giving people that are maybe still struggling to make those repairs, but, you know, they make a decent income, but they're still struggling, it's a way that we can help them.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
In some years, Jennifer, we've had money, the CDBG money for sidewalk upgrades, so instead of it being 50-50 with homeowner, you know, CDBG money takes over on that, and that's not in there this year, is that correct?
We typically set aside a certain amount for an infrastructure project, and so for this year, it's the sewer project.
This is the sewer, I'm not complaining.
Yes, and we haven't done sidewalks, actually, since I've been here, so this will be the third year, so next year, we probably will look at doing a section of sidewalk replacement.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Actually, Jennifer, if you'd want to take a seat and see if you can help answer some questions. Anyone want to come forward and public comment on the presentation that's just been made, this public hearing? Okay. I declare this public hearing closed, and we begin the next public hearing, which is the public hearing for the fiscal year, I'm told I have to do that, Diana, sorry. Fiscal year 2018 proposed budget, and we'll have a brief presentation, and then the same format for this public hearing. We'll have questions from the council, and comments, and then if you want to weigh in, you can have up to three minutes, but it has to be with respect to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to talk about the budget, once again. The budget, the public hearing tonight is for the budget, that was the proposed budget on February 27th, which is out on the website, for a total of 213, I'm sorry, 213 million We published that on February 27th, we've had work sessions, we've had discussions. What you see in the packet is slightly higher, and as Jennifer Tony just mentioned, a grant totaling $311,000 was added to the packet, but the public comment is actually on the original budget less the $300,000, if that makes sense. So that was just some housekeeping that we wanted to make you aware of, and with that, I would take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thanks for all your work on this, by the way.
Awesome.
It's taken a long time, and it's very complicated. Questions, comments from members of the city council on the budget? Alderman Painter.
Well, I just want to thank all the staff, because this budget reflects over $2 million in cuts that every department has made on their own, and I know that was really difficult to do, and I just want to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you. Certainly, the one thing that we want to make clear is, just because dollars have gone up, doesn't mean that there haven't also been cuts. So there's all kinds of different ways in which our costs go up. Alderman Black.
Thank you, and Johnny, well, good point, the staff has done a lot of extra work on this, and I think this is our best budget yet, in terms of being able to show people the programming that is going into the services that they receive. My question is, I was looking for it here in the backup material, what are the next steps of this budget? So we have this, refresh the public's memory, so we vote on it at a later point in time, is that correct?
Yes, we are proposing to adopt the budget on April 10th, so at the next city council meeting, we have until April 30th to adopt the budget.
Great. And I've talked about this before at various opportunities, I know that we have capital improvement projects in here that are budgeted, which are great, but I again have a real discomfort with supporting a sewer oversizing project in the Grove, which I believe is part of this budget, and I do not believe that we should be spending money on that at this time. That money can be better spent in our historic core, so I just want to make everybody aware, that's a concern that I have, as we move forward, and I look forward to the public's comments.
Okay.
If I may.
Alderman Page.
Thank you, and Scott, thanks for reminding me of this, and I think maybe we had a similar conversation a year ago, where we talked about an aggregated budget, and perhaps dealing with and answering some of the questions that you and others of us had, maybe perhaps at individual vote times, when these items come through, so, you know, appreciate, I think, and I'm recalling that you, I think, had some flexibility last year with that, with going, okay, yeah, we can do that, as long as, as long as we all collectively understand, we may raise questions at some point in the future about a budget that we already approved in the aggregated form, so.
Yeah.
Right. And just to clarify, obviously, the city manager talks to the council and department heads, and tries to get feedback, and talks to me, as the city manager's putting the budget together, but it's, it would be rare that a city manager or anybody's budget would not have at least some changes or amendments. So this could be a budget amendment that would be proposed by a member of the city council, it could be the mayor of Bloomington, not just me, but structurally, the mayor of Bloomington has a line item veto that could be pulled out, and then sent back for reconsideration by the council, there are any number of ways, if there are some specific pieces of a budget. When we were in Washington last week for One Voice, and I'll say more about that later, I mean, pretty much members of both parties said that the budget that the current president has sent is going to be massively adjusted, but every president's budget, every governor's budget, right, every mayor, if it's a strong mayor former, or a city manager's budget, often has some kinds of tweaks. It's a plan, it's a starting point for discussion, so certainly, if there are some items for budgetary amendments, those should be fairly simple to make. Alderman, Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Fruen.
Sorry. Thank you. I do want to make an issue that, I think I'd rather look at it more globally, that I think we have to be careful that we are a balanced community, and I think if we start looking at, I know Scott didn't characterize it this way at all, but I think if we start looking at neighborhood issues, ward issues, I think we're really going to be heading down the wrong path. I think this is about balance, and about previous discussions, previous, maybe their obligations, implications, but, you know, it's no different than the Coliseum, or BCPA, or things that we've committed to, that we've said, we've built it, we've developed it, we've approved it, and not to follow through with our intentions in our prior discussions, that concerns me a little bit. So I don't want to mischaracterize anything Scott said, I'm just saying, let's be careful we don't pull the plug on things that we've already discussed and debated and approved in the past, and council members change, but I guess I've never looked at things according to neighborhoods and territories and wards and neighborhoods, I just hope we avoid that. And I see that most often, I think we've flushed ourselves from this, but I saw it in the past with roads, and I think all nine of us got into, well, my road, my road, my street, my ward, and if we don't let public service guide that and drive that, then we're in trouble, if the nine of us are trying to drive road resurfacing, so I use that as an example, but I think we just have to be careful, we're one team up here, and not ward-oriented, in my opinion.
Let's see, oh, Alderman Schmidt.
I'd like to follow up on that, Jim. What I hear Scott saying, and what I've heard other Aldermen say, is that we need to take care of what we've got, and taking care of what we've got is looking at what's been neglected for many, many years. And I've also heard, when we talk about the Grove, for example, I haven't heard anybody say that we don't meet that obligation, because you're right, we, whether we knowingly or unknowingly made that obligation, we have that obligation now, but I think the request is that we pace it to the growth within the Grove. So I don't see that at all as any kind of ward issue, I think it's a statement of values, that we do want to take care of what we have, and I think we all feel that sense of urgency, actually, right now, without backing away from our obligation. So I just, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we, we don't have that as a kind of a core value for our city.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, again, Patty Lynn, you may want to have a seat, in case there are questions to be answered by members of the audience.
May I just publicly thank my staff and Carla Merrill, our budget managers here tonight, and all the department heads who helped in making those reductions.
And please thank them on our behalf as well.
I will.
Patty Lynn, okay, at this point, are there any people in the audience who want to come up and speak on the budget? Okay. If there's anybody else, if you get in behind Donna, and you have up to three minutes, we ask you to sign in. Thank you.
Okay. I also appreciate all the work that's been done, but I look at this from a household perspective, just on a bigger scale, and it concerns me when you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, like taking money out of the health account to pay for whatever else is going on. And I'm also concerned that there's going to be, well, no, actually, when the sales tax was raised a year and a half ago, Mr. Hale said that in fiscal year 2019, he predicted that there would be another structural deficit, and I see that it's already here. If you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's not sustainable. And the minutes from the November 16 council retreat specifically say that you're waiting until after the election, or sometime this spring, to raise the sewer and the sanitary and the storm sewer fees. So again, another tax fee put on us, and it's really hard on a fixed income to absorb these. And I think that one way would be to review the healthcare, like Mr. Fruen has said, to see if it can get in more line with the private sector, and I believe that there has been a ruling about pension spiking, and I think you might want to go back to that topic. From my playbook, the quality of life is directly related to the cost of living. I can find ways to entertain myself, and the city should not be in the real estate business. 40% of the families here are at or below the poverty level, and I'm going to quote JFK from 2060, or 1963, I'm sorry, lower rates of taxation will stimulate the economy, sorry, stimulate economic activity, and so raise the level of personal and corporate income as to yield within a few years, an increase, not a reduced flow of revenues to the government. And that's my perspective. I think if taxes are reasonable, people will spend, and more money will come into the coffers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Lambert.
I think I know the answer to this, but it's a question for Patty, I guess, on the pie chart here. We've got something over $200 million budget, and we've got the cellular Coliseum at 3%. So that's $6 million, more or less, that we're spending on the Coliseum. Is that correct?
Just going to check on that.
Because, you know, a common number that's published in the panograph and wherever is, we're only paying $500,000 or $600,000 or $700,000 for.
I think there's a couple things there, again, this is a little different than normal, because you can't ask us questions. First of all, the, if it's $500,000, that's probably the operating figure you're referring to, where we have, what, $2 point some million dollars in basically debt service? Yeah. Is that correct, Patty Lynn? Okay. And so, but now, would that, if you're citing $6 million or so, would that, that would not necessarily include any of the revenues that come in, correct? Is that only on the expenditure side?
This is a budget.
I know, that's expenditure side, that doesn't necessarily mean that.
Yeah.
Patty Lynn, do you have that in your hand? Yeah?
No, my whole point was, most people, I've been around knocking on doors, they say, well, the Coliseum, that's, we're subsidizing at $500,000, and we've got to pay for it, I understand that, so that's a couple million, 25 or 2.5 million. I think your number's probably correct, that our total expenditure for the Coliseum, if I read this right, is $6 million, 3% up a $200 million budget.
Right. Well, and I think part of what Patty Lynn can talk about is, that's going to show up on the cost side, that doesn't mean that that's costing taxpayers that kind of money, because that means that there are revenues and other things that are coming into the Coliseum, whether it be concessions or whatever, that balance that off, so that's part of why it, we need to make sure that we're dealing with the proper evidence.
Yeah.
Right.
I stand corrected, then, if that's the case.
Yeah. Patty Lynn, can you clarify? Thanks.
So, yes, the Coliseum budget in total is about $7 million, 1.2 million of that represents the debt service on the building. That, it's balanced, both revenue and expense, it's the same number, and there's a myriad of things that go into that, on the VenueWorks side, and then we also have the building side, where we take care of the facility, we replace equipment, we pay for the audit, and other services. So in total, $6 million, it's actually closer to $7, but that's both the city side and the VenueWorks piece, and it is a balanced budget.
Okay, but just to clarify, it doesn't cost the taxpayer $7 million, is that? Because there are revenues that come in?
That's correct.
Right. So we'd have to figure out what the net cost to taxpayers is by subtracting all the revenues from the expenditures?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have a rough idea of what that would be?
I hate to do math on the floor, but I will try, Mayor.
Okay. If you don't, we can certainly get back to Mr. Lambert at a later point, if that's.
The vast majority would be revenues coming in.
Vast majority of the $7 million would be revenues, so it would be $3 million or less, $2 million or something, if you include absolutely everything, debt service.
Oh, it's a majority.
Okay. All right, well, we'll get the specific numbers to Mr. Lambert.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. I declare this public hearing closed, and now we move along to our regular agenda. Item 9A, consideration resolution proving the action plan that was described to us just a little while ago. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, we're going to be stepping out for this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because of WBRP.
Absolutely, got you. Okay. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve by Alderman Howman, is there a second? Second by Alderman Painter. Any discussion? Okay. Let's see, for some reason, I've got an "I" vote on here. Oh, 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 it's okay, all right. It's okay. Far be for me to criticize people for messing up this technology here. Okay, if you go ahead and vote, an "I" is in favor of the motion as presented. Thank you. Anybody else need to vote? Okay, we got it. Motion carries seven to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. If you could let our distinguished colleagues back in the room? Thank you. We're locked in.
I don't know the secret. They never gave me the cool.
Now we go on to item 7B, consideration of the bids, running the Linden Street Bridge and Sugar Creek.
Nine B.
What did I say? Oh, 9B, sorry. It's not that late. Okay, I can't. I'll turn this over briefly to Mr. Karch, and then we'll see if we have a motion.
Mayor, City Council, tonight, this is an easy one, you've seen this three times before, we're discussing the Linden Street Bridge widening, this is the fourth time, and this time, we're bringing to you the bids. They've been opened, and it, this is hopefully an easy one, because the actual lowest bid is underneath the engineer's estimate and the budget, and so staff would recommend that it is awarded.
Okay. Questions to Mr. Karch, or a motion?
Just thank you, I know you've been working on this for a while, I'll make a motion we approve as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Lauer.
I think I already know the answer to this, and you know I've had objections. I still object, but I do want to make notice, public record, that I'm going to go ahead and vote yes, along with the crowd here today, okay? I object to the fact that we're basically voting in absentia into the future on 30% to 40% of a bridge to allow for a trail that we don't even know is ever going to exist. And I think this is an area where we really ought to step back, take a look at our economy, and understand that folks just don't have the money to pay for a lot of this, okay? Maybe if we were bonding it for 50 years, and there is some estimate that we were going to have some growth at some point in the next 40 years, I could go along with it, and not make a point, but I am making a point. I think we really ought to step back and take a look at what we're really doing here, and. and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to grow our economy. Thank you.
Other comments? All right, saying none? Go ahead and vote. Motion carries nine to zero. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Welcome aboard, Kevin. Thank you. All right. Moving along here, we move on to item 9C, consideration of awarding a construction grant, excuse me, contract with Lane Christensen Company for the St. Peter Aquifer Test Wells One and Two project. And we have a brief presentation by Bob, and then brief council discussion.
Thank you. Good evening. I've been here before, but only one prior time, so I'll take a few minutes and walk back through where we're at. This is St. Peter Aquifer Test Wells One and Two. We approached you in July of 2016 to do the design contract for this. This, what we have in front of you, is a construction contract. So we're moving to the next step, as we promised to come back to you. It's part of essentially water supply planning options. What I put up on the screen there is actually an aerial photo of Division Street and our 10 million gallon reservoir. It was uncovered in the early 1900s. It's obviously covered now, but still in existence, still utilized on a daily basis. The point I'll make is that we've been water supply planning since 1874. We continue to need to do that. Some will maintain our infrastructure, some we need to replace and move on, some we need to add to. And I like the pictures I pulled out of the box. The graphics you've seen before, not as historic, but still indicate that the water supply planning, interim supply plan in 2010 indicated our first step was some blending water up at the lake, help with our nitrates, help with supply. We're still looking at about 2 million gallons, but not going to the shallow wells, going to much deeper, the St. Peter Aquifer, about 2,000 feet down. Again, a couple thousand feet down, from 1,600 to about 2,100 to be exact, separated by a lot of impervious layers that protect the shallower wells, the private wells, from what we're doing, allow us to blend and get some more capacity. The contract you approved in July had a number of items included. We're at the bidding phase at this time, looking to award that to a contractor, with still some things to come from our consultant, including construction observation and quality and recommendations of what we find in the ground. Where are the wells going to be at? Lake Bloomington? We held a public meeting in January 18th. We had 75-ish people that were very engaged for about an hour and a half or so. Some great dialogue, great questions the whole entire time, very technical in nature, very much about what impacts, if any, would occur to their private wells, and what we would do as a city to help monitor and maintain that if something was to occur. Answered questions over and over, myself a little bit, but also our consultant and Illinois State Water Survey. Great discussion all about. That resulted in some well analysis. What we offered is, we'll come out, analyze your well as it is today, we'll see what the level is when we start test pumping, we'll monitor over time. If something changes, we all have the same baseline information to go forth, to see if that was something we impacted or something else. We feel very strongly we will not impact them, and in fact, a number of people indicated they believe that too after our presentation. Still, there's about 17 to date requesting us monitoring them. Most of them reside in the El Paso Golf Course subdivision area, off to the west of where we are at Lake Bloomington. We also have coordinated with the Hudson Township Water Authority, had a couple of meetings, sit down with them to walk through our plan. They attended the public meeting, and generally are in support of as much as they can of the project, working through the provisions and the ordinances they have to make sure we get their permits when we move forward as well. We proposing to award the contract to Lane Christensen Company. It's a $1.49 million contract, very large. We've learned there's very few contractors can drill that deep, only a handful, and only one that we found that is qualified to meet our apprenticeship and training programs as well. Wells are going to be on our, on our property that we own. It's probably hard to read. The graphic on the right has two red dots. The topmost one is Test Well One, the bottom one is Test Well Two. We'll drill Test One, Test Well One first, did I get that outright? Determine what the quantity capacity is before we make the determination to spend more money doing Test Well Number Two, whether we want to increase the size or we think it's feasible or not, so trying to minimize our impact and have the provisions built into the contract so we just pay for what we do. Again, we're going to go down 1,600 to 2,100 feet into the St. Peter Aquifer. We will case the top 1,200 feet and then grout it around it, essentially sealing off any potential from interplay between the aquifer we're going to and any of the private shallower wells. I'll be back again after we do that, to propose what we found, what our next steps are, and determine what our capital improvements might be needed to incorporate that water supply into our water source options. And thank you.
Questions? Nice picture. Alderman Lauer.
How long will the grout last? We're going to seal that up with?
How long will it last?
Yes. Is it indefinite? Is it 50 years? Are we just guessing?
I don't have an exact answer, but it's a pretty extensive long time.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Dave Sage.
Thank you. So Bob, refresh my memory, because we've been talking about aquifers for a number of years, right? And so just for the purpose of general awareness, so for a number of years, we talked about the Mohammed Aquifer. And so, so kind of walk me through, because my recollection is, is, I think I've developed a little aquifer blindness here along the way. And so, is this, this, this is a continuation of kind of a, isn't it kind of a, a shift away from the Mohammed Aquifer? And more to perhaps these aquifers closer to, to Lake Bloomington?
I can't exclude any option in the future from our consideration, but walking through the interim supply plan that was done in 2010, one of the first and foremost things we needed to do was find some blending water at Lake Bloomington.
Right.
So we looked shallow, we got adamant responses that they were very concerned that we would impact the private wells in the vicinity. Our report actually indicates that was a distinct possibility, so we kind of put pause. We looked at the Southwest Well Field, kind of the fingers of the Mohammed. Also got lots of indication of environmental interactions and interplays and other studies we'd have to do. A new report from Illinois State Water Survey came out about a year and a half ago, indicating that the St. Peter Aquifer that comes down through all of Illinois has a potential for us to tap the water. It has some other components that we're not used to, but blending, it should be able to, to deal with those. As we're working through that, we know we need that regardless for our nitrates. For instance, we just approached eight out of a 10 limit a couple weeks ago, and we had to switch from Bloomington back to Evergreen. We monitored those, we were monitoring those multiple days a week to make sure we knew what we were doing, but we need to do something with our current water supply. After that, we need to determine what the next step is. I can't tell you if that's regional, I can't tell you if that's the ground, the Southwest Well Field, I can't tell if that's Mohammed. We're going to have to do something, but you're going to have in front of you in a couple of weeks, our master plan. It's a capital project, large project, combines everything we have. It also looks at the adequate supply and treatment facilities of our existing facilities, and determines what we might need based on progression, projection growth to the future. That'll help guide us to our next step. This one's needed regardless, and something else in the future. That's a long-winded answer.
So again, my perception is, is that we have now a more cost-effective option, perhaps. And so wanted to acknowledge that, because again, that's, that's some good work coming out of the Water Department. But it's always nice just to have some options, right, for, to meet one of those, those core services, which is delivering quality water, right?
That is our goal.
So this is good work by the Water Department, so thank you.
I'll pass on your compliment.
Is it fair to say, because I think it's an excellent question that Alderman Sage asked, and I'm sure many people in the, the public would like to know that, this is more of perhaps an interim to mid-range solution to our water, our water issues? Mohammed Aquifer would be one of many that would be longer-term solutions?
Yes, exactly. If you look at the screen behind your, to your side, that gets you out to 20, 25 or later. We're starting a little bit late in that timeframe, so we feel this one, based on what we've seen in demand use over the last seven or eight years, has not met the projection of what was done in 2010. That matches the nationwide trend. It's coming down, it's not exponentially going up. Our per capita is not growing as it was in the late, early 2000s. And so, our, our master plan will allow us to know what that is. It may extend it another 10 or 20 years. So it's kind of a short-term, midterm, maybe a little bit longer, depending on how you want to define that. It's not our ultimate goal, we're going to need to find something else, but it's to get us some point into the future.
And then one of the difficulties with the Mohammed Aquifer, in spite of the fact that would be a very long-term solution, is that there, there is no part of Bloomington that goes over it, and there's no land that we own that goes over it.
That's correct. I will say that Alderman Lauer, myself, and Assistant City Manager Rasmussen got to meet with several of the water authorities from well west of town, out to Danvers, and we met in Mackinac, to talk about the potential of what would come in the future. We ended a very good meeting, discussing our initial intentions and the ability to come back and talk later, but nothing in the short term about coming to coordinate with them. But they're open for those conversations and coordinations when we get to that point.
Okay, great. Other questions? Saying none? Thank you so much for all your hard work. Appreciate that. Next, we move on to city managers' discussion? Oh, excuse me, oh, that's why we have to vote on this. Okay, this is not my night.
I move that we consider awarding a construction contract with Lane Christensen Company for the St. Peter Aquifer.
Moved by Alderman Howman. Is there a second before? Second by Alderman Lauer. Ready to vote. The motion passes nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Now, we move on. City managers' discussion.
And I have nothing to talk about this evening, so...
Okay. Well, I have a few things. First of all, I want to thank Alderman Scott Black for taking the mayor's open house on Friday. My plane was scheduled to come in at 4:20, and the open house starts at 4:30. And of course, I was stuck at O'Hare, and I didn't get in until well after 5:30. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. And we did go to a one voice trip. Alderman Burgess can kind of clarify some of this. The, I think one of the big takeaways is that nobody in Washington, neither Democrats nor the Republicans, nor the people at the agency, seem to know what in the world is going to happen next in terms of the budget or anything, pretty much. We went down there at the height of the, the tension, and you could certainly feel it in the room. We do have, I think, some optimism, is that perhaps a good way to put it, that we might have a possibility of an extension on the soccer fields underneath the runway at the Sura Airport. So we spoke with Congressman Darren LaHood, and Congressman Rodney Davis, and our senators, the, and even Congresswoman Sherry Bustos, who doesn't exactly represent us, but she's Peoria through the Quad Cities, and she's on the same committee as Davis that does oversee the FAA. As long as we are all united, and all of us are, we're going to seek up to a five-year extension, maybe more, but a five-year extension on the, that, so we can circle back to see, give us some breathing room on, on soccer fields, because that ends as of December 31st. So our conversations with all of the members of Congress, again, two from, well, three from one side, two from the other, were all very supportive, as long as we had a, you know, had a plan, and we were united. Other than that, we did find out a lot of information about transportation. First of all, our Main Street corridor Tiger Grant, the current budget that the president has proposed gets rid of Tiger Grants. So we don't know whether or not that's coming back. Obviously, that's got to pass the Congress. The other thing that we have found out is that fast lane grants that might be able to fund our Hamilton Road Extension proposal are, have had a multi-year funding. So that money is there for the next two years, from last year and two more years out, I think. Is that correct? So that is something that we can move forward with and apply for with some insurance that at least there's money that we're applying for, rather than an empty pot. So other than that, anything I should add for that? Anyway, thank you. Oh, and then we did have a resolution that I want to make sure that is made public and to all the council members, that was drafted by City Councilman Jim Fruen and City Councilman, Normal Town Councilman, R.C. McBride, to talk about what we might do as two communities moving forward, recognizing our differences, recognizing our similarities, and proposing some steps to move forward in the post-metra zone era. I think that's a crazy, you know, good way to do it.
Will we get to see this?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying, if Nora were here, you'd have copies of it right now. No, yeah, I mean, I just got back, this is my first day in the office. Okay? And so I was going to ask Nora to do it. Actually, I guess my copy is in the car, so hopefully by tomorrow, maybe scan it, put it out there. It's just a, an idea, set of ideas, that actually, I thought, looked very promising for a beginning of a discussion moving forward. So I'll try to get that to everybody as soon as possible. Alderman, comments? Jim?
Thank you, Terry. If I can just add on that, I think it is a, a nice document to, to help your unification. And I think the danger of that is, like we see quite often, is the temptation to wordsmith it. And I'm not saying it ought to be carte blanche stamped, but if we're going to move forward, its principles, its policy, its intentions, its guidelines, we really need, the sooner we act on it, the better. The public's wanting that. The public's wanting us to get back to the table and talk. So I hope that as a group, whether it's ourselves or Normal, that we don't wordsmith it.
Right. And just having read it, as I say, you did stay, you and R.C. stayed at 500 feet. I think there are probably principles that we can broadly agree on. So, thank you.
So glad it's going to be shared with everybody tomorrow. One quick thing, we've received a lot of top 10 awards or notifications over the years, and I don't know if we have a collection of those.
I'm sure Nora does. We had six just this year.
Yeah.
Most livability awards, best place for STEM graduates, all kinds of things, yeah.
Hopefully, we've got those collected somewhere, but I think one that's noteworthy that we just got this week from Jason Wingate with the recent death of Arnold Palmer, they took it upon themselves to identify the top 10, or actually, top 25 Arnold Palmer golf course designs. He designed over 300 around the United States, and we were ranked number nine. And this news, this news release goes on to say that the den at Fox Creek had 20,600 rounds played in 2016, which was over 1,550 rounds more than 2015. And it did open last Friday, but whether it's the golf courses, whether it's BCPA, whether it's Coliseum, I mean, a lot of this success is attributed to how much encouragement and push and attention we give it. It can't survive on its own, and we've got to supply some enthusiasm. And so I hope that, we hope we have good weather this year, not only for golf, but all our parks programs. And this is really quite an award when you talk about 300 designed courses, and we're in the top 10. So I hope we can get some good press out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Howman.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind people that Wednesday evening, March 29th, Alderman Burgess and I are holding a town council at the BCPA, 5 to 7.
Town hall meeting.
What'd I call it?
Town council.
Town hall, sorry. Town, yes. Town hall meeting, and even though it's being sponsored by people that represent Ward Four and Ward Eight, it's not specific to residents from those two wards. So anyone is willing, anyone is welcome to join us.